Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click.
Well, good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our inspirational word for the day comes from Matthew. Jesus said, "God blesses those who work for peace, for they will be called the children of God." And Commissioner Kalo has our dog today.
Oh, yeah. Look at you.
Aww.
You're beautiful.
I want a cookie.
Come on. Let's go get you a home. You ready? Let's get you a home. Our featured dog today is a Staffordshire Terrier. She's three to four years old. She was an owner surrender. She's out of Lorraine. They couldn't take care of her anymore. But she has a great personality, friendly, gets along well with other dogs, and she's available for adoption now. She's been with us for a few weeks. And we have 27 dogs now, right, Tim?
Yes.
So if she's not quite up to speed for you, we've got plenty more to pick from, but she's really looking for a good home. Her name is Lily. She has a name, so stop by our kennel.
We have two appointments today. One at 9:45 is at Lorraine County and 10 o'clock to help district request for a lobby. Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
See, I listen, though.
I know. I see that. Appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Bills?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Can we hold number eight? I just talked to Elaine this morning. She's on her way in.
You want to come back to it later?
Can we come back to it after she gets here?
Okay.
Under the Commissioner's authorized various personnel actions indicated on the summary sheet from employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Administrator Cortez.
President Lundey. The, I would like a brief executive session. I have potential new hires at the collection center. Also, I want to update you on ongoing labor negotiations with United Steel Workers of America and the United Auto Workers with Children's Services. And of course, they filed a notice to negotiate a job in family services, so it's time to have those discussions about where we want to be positioning ourselves going forward. Also, potential sale of real estate. All three topics allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. At the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and talk about those issues. Thank you.
And you said, "Brief"?
I think it'll be brief. The, I did bring the pizza coupon, though, so just in case. But I think it'll be brief.
Approve away of the reading of the minutes of July 6th and yesterday morning's meeting.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Approve payment to victim in domestic violence, Lorraine County Safe Harbor Inc., DBA Genesis House, for the amount of $25,793.39 as collected by Lorraine County for the period January 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2016, and in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, 2303.201 and 3113.34339.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Adopt 2017 Lorraine County tax budget and prove is submitted in the tax booklet.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
A little bit of discussion. Lisa, you want to join us?
We discussed some of this last night at our meeting when we were doing the sales tax hearings. You want to go over Lisa versus this year's budget and revenues and next year's projected revenues, especially in light of $1 million in lower sales tax based on some Medicaid changes to the laws?
Yes. Good morning. Right now, our estimated revenue for this year is right around $54.4 million. We had a budget passed beginning of the year of $59,960,658. Get my tax budget out here. So according to the tax budget, and you know, as always, it's only midway through the year here, so there's still a lot of unknowns. Things could happen. I'm showing an unencumbered carryover balance of $5.2 million going into next year. It could quite possibly, and that's at best. It could quite possibly come a little bit lower than that.
You think it's quite that high?
Based off of the first six months expenditures and revenues now, and saying that also, remember at the end of the year, we get together with the Budget Commission and we do adjust the revenues up or down, and the sales tax still might come in a little bit higher than what our current revenue estimate is at 19.5 right now.
Well, we did have $100,000 additional with the casino revenue on the last draw, so versus last year's number.
Yeah, I'm still concerned, though, about the serious job losses that we've had in Lorraine, what impact that's going to have.
The, our carryover into 2016 was...
Unencumbered, it was 6.3 million.
I want to talk about that for a second, if I may.
Yeah, that's fine. That's why I brought it up.
You know, you do realize that we really worked hard to push that carryover number up. We pulled back just about every advance and scraped the bottom of the sink for what we could find because I was worried about the rating agencies. So normally, we have a little bit more money in advances out there to various activities such as CDBG and the workings of the county. Because I was struggling to maintain carryover, which is a key indicator to the radio agencies of the health, the fiscal health of our county plus our cash flow abilities, we really tightened the belt extremely to the last notch last year. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to pull back and still keep those funds moving, those programs moving, the way we did last year.
And I think as in past years, because we've had the funds, you know, we've advanced maybe $100,000, $150,000 to get those programs started, whereas now, I mean, it might just be $50,000 just to get them through the first month. So it's not like we have a lot even to pull back.
The cash flow is getting tighter and tighter, and that was noted in the Moody's last rating that I received, the final published rating this week, and I'll share it with you. But they're extremely worried about our margins on cash flow. But we did that last year in an attempt to, and actually, we accomplished what we were trying to accomplish. We maintained our rating again this year with them. But I need to tell you that it was hard to get that number to 6.2, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to be as, be able to tighten it down as much. 5.2 million probably is realistic, but we're going to have to do what we did last year. How many times have I walked down and say, "Pull this back, pull this back, pull it back"? And we just narrowed to the bare operating in those funds. In addition to, you do realize we're entering next year with 3 points, excuse me, $2.75 million of one-time revenue enhancement that we've done this year that I promise you, I will not be able to duplicate for you next year. So we're entering the year with that burden without my complete and clear understanding that we have 2.75 million in revenue. Also, that carryover figure is not taking into consideration that we're in union negotiations. We have a bargaining position on the table with regard to three-year contracts with wages and benefits with the unions. Their, our positions are not overly generous, but they're proper. Can't talk much more about that here because we're...
Negotiation.
Right. We're in fact finding this afternoon with the steelworkers right here in this building. So there's going to be additional costs and burdens that come out of those negotiations. Let me say this before somebody says, "Well, they deserve nothing. For three or four years, they took nothing," and then successive contracts after that didn't give them a great deal back for those years of nothing. And so they're not being overly aggressive at the table, but they would like to see something for their membership. I don't think their position has been irresponsible. So all of those are additional costs that we're going to be having to face going forward, and you understand that we're leveraging the future. You may want to talk about that. We've talked about it enough.
Plenty of times, oh, yeah, we are spending our money today, and we are going out for bonding on projects that will owe money on loans for products that are no longer usable service. So I mean, it's...
I'm a little worried about those. I'm a little worried about how to get those bonds rated. Originally, the capital improvements that we did were long-term improvements, building improvements. Usually, you can get a life of 20 to 25 years out of them. But when you start purchasing cars and things like that, software, it really becomes a very, very difficult sell to rate those bonds. Not that they can't be rated. I still believe that we're going to have to do some short-term bonding on some of the issues that don't particularly have a long service life and separate them out, but I haven't come to that fork in the road yet because we keep recapitalizing the notes.
And rolling up the interest.
Right. When people, when I say recapitalize the notes, exactly, that's an easy way of understanding it. We're refinancing our interest. We're paying nothing on any of that. It's much like that hot tub you buy on three years, no interest, and on the 36th payment, if you don't have it paid off, all the interest comes due.
Correct.
Well, we don't have that luxury. All our interest is going to come due no matter when we go to permanent financing. We can't keep recapitalizing like that forever. There is, there is a limitation on how many times we can recapitalize notes, interest on notes, into notes, and stay in notes until we have to go to permanent financing. And we're getting pretty...
We're getting pretty close.
And we're in our fourth year now?
Well, we took, 2014, we took out the capital notes. We've rolled them twice now.
And this is the third roll this year?
Yes.
So we got probably another year or two. Five years is usually the magic number, but with some little bit of maneuvering, you can sometimes get...
Finesse.
Well, finesse, maneuvering, positioning, you may be able to get out to seven, but the cost continues to escalate on those things the longer you, the longer you push them out there. And those are just a few of the things that we're just, we're looking at now. And of course, there's still a lot of back demand for capital improvement, and that's not going to cease. People, they've got a brand-new building across the street, but the Justice Center is now 12 years old, and it needs, it needs certain work and refreshing. Buildings always need work, and we have a lot of square footage on the roof.
And buildings that take a lot of use, no different than the jail 24/7.
Commissioner, it was only five years ago we were fretting over how we're going to pay for a new jail. When the revenue vanished, the problem didn't vanish. We just stopped talking about it because we had no way of dealing with it. But the problem still exists today. We did capital improvements out there. We brought them under the capital improvement bond. They're really good folks to work with out there. They're not very demanding. They're just trying to get the minimum things they need done, done out there. But that's, that's a ticking time bomb that eventually will have to be dealt with. Not today, not tomorrow, but, but long-term, there should be a plan on the table how to deal with that, and there isn't right now.
2030 plan, what are our visioning?
The problem is, there's so many issues that are not even under our control, that we have no control over, like the $1 million we lost this week for the Medicaid interest.
For the sales taxes.
Sales taxes, right.
Well, that's how they're going to fund the Medicaid expansion. So the governor did the Medicaid, agreed to the Medicaid expansion, and I'm not going to weigh in whether he should have or shouldn't have. But, so he burdened the local taxpayers with that expansion and took credit for it during his presidential run that he did the Medicaid expansion. He failed to say that he's going to shove that back on the local, local level.
Well, that wasn't because of, it was the feds came down, if you read all the language of the paper, the feds came down and said it couldn't be taxable. They changed the rules on it.
So just to expand on that a little bit...
The state has a rainy day fund, do we?
Yeah, they do.
Our money in the rainy day fund.
The original estimate that the county auditor put in for our sales tax next year was 20 million, and he has now dropped that down to 19 million because of this issue here. I just kind of wanted to get that out there, so.
Yeah, it's 5% to 7% of every county's sales tax budget is what their guesstimate.
And he did say, you know, he might be being a little bit conservative here, but...
What was the percentage, Commissioner? Because I have had those...
5% to 7% across the state has been the average. They're expecting the sales tax drop. That's what the Commissioners Association released last, last week, maybe Thursday, Friday, when I got it.
And when did the state raise their sales tax a quarter percent a couple of years ago?
Yeah, two years ago.
They raised it a quarter percent, so they couldn't take that out of that quarter percent. They have to take it out of what we raised.
Out of our local stuff, because we won't have the sales tax within our county.
Right.
So that, the interest rates, the judges ordering their budgets for the last, how many years, four, five years? It's just endless of, you know...
The interest rate?
Right.
I think we were peaking at about 7.8 million.
We were up to 8.
8.3 was the...
Was it 8.3?
8.3, yeah.
It's been so long, I can't remember the number.
I know.
I am in the process of trying to get that presentation I did last year updated to more current numbers.
Yes, it was a very good presentation.
Yeah, so I am in the process of trying to get that done.
So if it was 8.3, I think it...
Or 1.2.
Peak at 1.2 last year?
I think so.
1.3 we brought in last year.
You know, it's, so you're talking about $7 million of lost revenue over...
Year after year after year.
Well, you know, the curve was good, even though the bond market was crashing, the curve was good the first two or three years. But we bottomed out about three years ago, and we've stayed bottomed out.
We bottomed out about six years ago.
Is it that long ago?
Yes, it's been that long. I remember when those estimates were 900,000.
Oh, I thought that was about three years.
And looking at the, in 2014, we brought in 1.1 million.
Right.
And I'm sure the years prior to that were below a million.
They were.
So if you add up all the years and all the missed opportunity on interest income, and at least somebody blame us again, there's very few...
They're throwing their money?
There's very few, well, there's very few things that you, that you and the Treasurer can do to invest those funds. They're very, very restricted funds, and the vehicles that you're allowed under the Ohio Revised Code are the ones that suffer most in a recession and have not recovered from the recession. So you don't have any options. Before somebody writes that you mismanaged the investment portfolio so you're not getting interest income, because somebody will say that.
I think Treasurer's done a good job, and you know, I know that it's popular nowadays to bash government and say the government spends money recklessly. You know, the bottom line is revenue is off considerably, and it's just a struggle to pay the bills when you have to borrow money for a depreciating asset like patrol cars. It's part of the reality of what we're, what we're dealing with here, but, and this is why we're talking about the sales tax increase. It's so badly needed, and we're going to need, quite frankly, every penny of what our share ends up being.
Keep in mind, too, that our interest income would not be as high as it is if the Treasurer had not bought some of our bond issues that we had out there to bring the interest back to the county.
Yeah, the best, the best-paying things, and we had a struggle a little bit to convince him. Well, I'm being kind. Mr. Tellerick is a good partner.
Yes, he's a very good partner. But yeah, it took us a while to get him there.
But you're trying to convince him to buy our own revenue bonds for, again, we should explain when we talk in our vernacular, the revenue bonds are those bonds that are guaranteed by an assessment to a property for a major public improvement such as sewers, roads, storms, storm drains. Those things are, they're the best kind of bonds to have. They're secured by the property. Sometimes it's a default, but they, those things are corrected and remedied. They always pay. They never, they never default. And, and we had to work a little bit to get Dan to buy some of our own revenue bonds, which is formidable. I think they're the, they're the stars of the portfolio right now.
Oh, yeah, for sure. By a long shot.
In fact, they're probably already earning a good portion of the portfolio right now.
Do you want to move forward to 2017 with the budget packages?
Yeah, let's do that now.
So total request for general fund departments for next year is a little over $61 million, which is a little over $1 million increase of what their budgets were for 2016. Estimated revenue that was submitted is $49,613,000.
Those numbers don't add up, do they?
Not at all. So if, if our carryover comes in true at right around 5.2, we're looking at a deficit of approximately $5.5 million going into the, opening up the year next year.
And let's go back to that 54.4 million in revenue. That's, it's a changing number. Let's say it again. There is 2.75 million in that, that a one-time infusion of cash this year. That's why the, the distance between the revenue and the budget next year looks so much bigger.
Right.
I don't want somebody to claim we inflated the budget number and de-inflated the revenue number. Although, the revenue will probably be closer in actuality to 52, 51.5 realistically.
It's always conservative, as you know, when we get it in May.
But it's still going to be short, and...
Exactly.
Clearly, the 61 million is the tax budget. We refer to it as the wish list. It's required by...
Well, you know what, though? The last five or six years, our departments have done a pretty good job of, this isn't the old wish list we used to have.
I know. They're much more conservative, but it's, but just so people don't misunderstand, it's the real issue is the annual appropriation December.
That we do at the end of the year, correct?
This doesn't fund anything. It's required by the Ohio Revised Code to put the tax budget out there this time of year, but, but the big work comes in December when you have to make the annual appropriation going forward. And, and of course, last year, we ran into cash flow problems. We did, we did a short-term budget, and we allocated, then we did the final budget, but we were, in the last quarter, we did it monthly because...
Tried to, yeah.
Yeah. We had some real, real issues with, you know, funds having to be in place to be able to distribute them under the appropriations.
Wonderful.
Really?
No, not wonderful.
I was being sarcastic.
Oh, is that sarcasm?
Administrator Cortez.
Any further discussion on it?
No, I think that's gloomy enough, depressing enough.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Do we want to go to alcohol?
Elaine, would you be willing to come up and explain a couple of things?
Yeah, we'll move to item number eight.
Declaring it necessary to levy tax excess of the 10-millimeter limitation to provide funds for the additional Lorraine County alcohol and drug addiction services for the operation of the individual, family, and community alcohol and drug addiction prevention, treatment, and recovery support services for residents of Lorraine County pursuant to Chapter 340 and 5705.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for 1.2 mils for five years placed on 2006 tax duplicate to commence collection in 2017 on the November 8, 2016 date.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Now, discussion. Elaine, you want to?
Hi. Good morning. Again. Thank you. Sorry, there was a really weird car parked in the parking spot. Yeah, it's like sideways in the middle, so, so thank you. So last week, I was in front of your, two weeks ago, with our plan for the whole continuum of care pieces, putting in line a whole continuum of services, including prevention and recovery supports and treatment, and netting out what we feel Medicaid and insurance and whatever the state gives us in their budget, which every year now, we're subject not to a biennium budget, but a biennial review. So our board did meet last Tuesday for an emergency meeting and went through the strategic plan, went through the numbers, the same set of numbers that I presented to you on the 29th, and came up with a need to do a full continuum, including detox and residential services, treatment for indigent people, meaning on a sliding fee that cannot afford to pay otherwise, of about $7 million, which, when we got the revenue estimates back from the auditor, the board looked at the three-millage pieces and determined the 1.2 would be sufficient.
So you're not taking into account the money that you currently get, the 3 million that you get currently?
We are taking that into account. So they, the plan nets that back. So yeah, our total, we were estimating we're going to get about 1.2 million from OMAS, which is the Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services, specifically for services that we could put into place for the plan. Two years ago, there was an infusion of $50 million to behavioral health boards, and it got pulled back. There's none of that left. It's most of the money that comes from OMAS, Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services, is technically through the Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Block Grant, so it's federal money. And then Medicaid money, we've also considered Medicaid, and that goes directly to any service provider. But we don't have authority for services, and in order to ensure the complete continuum, which includes detox, the residential pieces, and some of that which Medicaid doesn't cover, and the OMAS money, which is our board's, you know, again, is 1.3 to total, but it's, it's focused. And so to build it all together is what our board feels the seven is focused on.
It's a lot of money.
It is.
It's a lot of money.
We're talking about $42 per 100,000 valuation?
Right.
Yeah, we ran the numbers yesterday.
Okay.
Significant.
42 per 100?
Yeah.
Per 100? I know it's needed. I mean, we have a crisis on our hands with the heroin epidemic, as we all know, and we know we need a detox center in Lorraine County and a place with the Perry project that we're working on with the police departments in Lorraine County for an addict that comes in, needs help. Instead of getting arrested, they get in with a peer and hopefully into treatment. So will that provide a treatment, a place to take these people?
Yes. I mean, and so our board's looking at, it doesn't have any capital money in there, so it's, how do we access beds? I mean, we feel from our largest provider, the Lakota Way, you know, they assess every week about 12 to 15 adults that need detox services. Right now, what we buy is about enough to serve about 40 to 50 clients for detox level of care. And with the opiate addiction, we really need to treat someone from detox to step down to recovery housing for at least four to six months to get them ready for re-acclimating into sober community living and giving them all the tools they need, skills with their behavioral, as well as other supports. Our plan for recovery housing is giving them about four months so they can get on their feet, get a job, get even the basic necessities back, because most of the time, they're removed from their families. I mean, their families have, have done everything they can, and so that includes all the way through about a six-month. programs, and that is just the start for what these opiates are doing on an addicted person's brain. So, the thought is, over longer term, if we can do this as a drug-free, healthy community with, all the way through sober living centers, we have better chances to save lives. People are dying every day, the emergency rooms, EMTs, are just revolving with overdose survivors, but often victims.
Did we find out how many people are actually being administered Narcan to save their life? I mean, I know we have the, the death number, which is very high, but if, I think if we knew how many people were actually out there getting Narcan every day, and I'm sure it's, you know, more than one a day.
Right. You know, we know from our police reports, because of our pilot, last year, the police officers just, not EMTs, administered about a hundred and fifty doses of Narcan and saved most of them, some were unsuccessful because of the timing of Narcan. The Lorraine County Health District has walk-in clinics, daily they're giving out Narcan. The issue also with the opiate addiction with fentanyl now, initially Narcan was a two-milligram suggested dose, which is what we, the pilot in two thousand and twelve had. With fentanyl, we're hearing first responders are having to use fourteen, fifteen milligrams, so even the volume to help even try to save a life, and then we've heard from our emergency rooms, dozens a day cycle, and particularly on weekends. So, I mean, it's hard to get all of that data of Narcan, but we know the county health department is pushing out Narcan regularly through community-based clinics as well.
So, you're gonna set up recovery beds?
Well, they're, um, the state has recovery sober living components, there are four levels that can go from like halfway houses all the way to sober houses or sober communities. Primary Purpose, which is soon to open on North Ridge Road, can house about sixty people. So, it's the sober bed, so, and depending on where a person is in their level of treatment or recovery, they could be living there while they're going through outpatient treatment, or they could be progressing into their aftercare, or just their sober living need, and still live there. Road to Hope House has now three houses, we have about, we'll have about a hundred and sixty sober beds once Primary Purpose opens up in Lorraine County. We could double that need to put people in sober living environments, and the state has rules and regulations that are from the national section for that. So, again, it depends, and, you know, whether it's just a house, most of the time, it's a community where they're getting their basic living needs, acclimation to employment.
So, you're not gonna own any facilities or have an interest in that?
That's not initially the plan through this.
'Cause I was just wondering
It's to contract with providers.
With the five-year plan, you would think that you'd wanna stretch this out maybe ten years instead of five.
Well, our board talked about the five and ten year, I mean, there's still transformation going on in Columbus, you know, we don't know how that's gonna, you know
We can't count on people in Columbus.
No, not at all, but
We have to do our own.
But we're always looking at, you know, potential, where can we best affect, you know, do we buy beds, do we work together to find a facility? You know, there's federal limits on residential treatment, sixteen beds each, so we could either
I thought they were working on changing that supposedly.
They've been working on that for a while, and hopefully, it's in the Carabao, we hope.
Okay. So, you arrived at the five instead of the ten years for, for what reason?
Um, I believe our board felt, initially, you know, we've been around for twenty-five years, but, you know, hopefully, the CDC keeps hoping that with other regulation, the opiate addiction will start curbing. And, the investment in here has about a million dollars for prevention, and so, one of the things we value strongly, not only with treatment and recovery, is the, is improving prevention. So, I mean, if we can prevent a young person from even taking a substance before they're twenty-one, that investment is as good as or better with having the treatment available. So, the five-year was really just something as we're new to it, you know, we'd like to be responsible to the community, this is our first ask, show them what we've done, and then come back to say, here's where we're at, and make, you know, a course correction or adjustment over time, and so, that's the really rationale from our board about that.
Are you guys ready to run a levy campaign?
We are ready to run a campaign.
That's what it's all about.
Yes, we are.
I have faith in you, Elaine, you guys do a great job, you've got a great board.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
It'll be up to the voters to, so, yep, good luck with that campaign.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elaine.
Thank you.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Item thirteen.
Thirteen. Declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation to provide funds for the additional criminal justice services under Section fifty-seven oh five point nineteen LL of the revised code for support of the county crime drug lab pursuant to RC three oh seven point four five, four five A seven, and the county coroner pursuant to RC three oh seven point four five A six for point sixteen mils for five years placed on the two thousand and sixteen tax duplicate to commence collection in two thousand and seventeen on the November eighth, two thousand and sixteen ballot.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
One more time, discussion, another ballot issue.
Yeah, pretty much ties in with what we just talked about, a lot of it, so
That's what I was going, it's sort of tying in, this is the crime lab and drug lab, along with
Coroner.
Our coroner, so, and this one will probably be five or six dollars a month, I would guess, I didn't bring my numbers breakdown on that. Lisa, point one-six, five bucks a month?
I think Teresa might have up there.
I left it on my desk, we're five or six bucks on this?
I think we're a little bit lower than that, but yeah.
Okay, under five dollars would be, I know we're somewhere, so, under five dollars a month at this point for a hundred thousand dollar valuation. Again, I mean, a significant part of law enforcement on handling these issues, and we know our coroner is inundated with not enough money and way too many autopsies to be dealt with. Hopefully, the first part with the five years, with that, his board will slow that knee down, and this is also a five-year, so it can be looked at in five years, and hopefully, that curve starts going the other way. So, I mean, it's something needed, we've tried it before, just the crime lab, and people didn't quite understand it was a crime drug lab for the testing of illegal drugs, and again, taking care of the coroner, so we can actually meet the need that is going on in our community.
Yeah, this probably should've passed before, but there wasn't full board support, there is full board support this time.
And if we can get the number for the hundred dollar, hundred thousand valuation, please, 'cause I'm sure Brad and Kaylee wanna print that.
I don't think that people in Lorraine County understand that we don't actually have a coroner's building facility or office, we do not have a morgue, we rent some office space above a bank in Oberlin for the coroner's office. So, there really is no facility. Most counties our size have a facility. I think Doc Evans has done a really, really good job, he's, he's good to work with, and he makes a lot happen with the little bit that he does
Yes, he does.
Have. But it's not just a drug problem, it's, it's, it's the growth of the county, the county is growing, the growth of county's not gonna stop, we, the housing starts way up, they're gonna continue to be way up through the eastern side, and we see growth in areas that we knew would come eventually, and that's down in Columbia Township and Eaton Township, it's all migrating west from the, not just from the urban areas, but from the rural areas, going south along the borders with Strongfield, Midiner, and Olmsted. So, those services are going to have to be improved regardless, and the drug problem is, is popular to talk about, but we also need to talk about where the county's gonna be in five or ten years with, with the issue of continued population growth and need for services. And the, the drug and crime lab itself has proved a key component to working with the Drug Task Force and the local police departments in identifying substances for quick turnaround, so they can combat the problem on a different level. I think, you know, Elaine spoke eloquently to the fact that a dollar prevention usually stops at ten dollars of cure, of treatment, and the same thing, if we can have law enforcement shut down a lot of the supplies, we can get more people behaving more reasonably. And I think we're gonna have a lot of support from the police departments, first responders, the people that are on the front line with regard to the levy excess. Elaine, if she's ready to run a levy campaign, well, we're gonna have to run a levy campaign.
Not that far, that's next week.
I know, but
Well, this one.
I know, but we're gonna
The next one after that, the next agenda item also.
Okay, right. But, thank you, Mr. Lundey, 'cause we did have a fraction board the last couple of times, and it made it very difficult to
Yeah, it should've passed last time, probably wouldn't have.
We thought so.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miskowski. Aye.
Men Resolution sixteen three seventy-five adopted June fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of ten mil limitation for Lorraine County TB clinic for zero point zero six five mils for five years. This said amendment is to reflect the typographical error, should read zero point zero zero six five for each one hundred dollars, and that's zero point zero six five. I forgot an extra zero.
Thank you.
They're always nice on the back end of a paycheck, though, when they put an extra zero. So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, this goes back to our county TB clinic, it's the one the commissioners lowered basically by half five years ago.
Us, we were at about forty-five percent, forty-four percent, yes.
We were close, where we were able to work private-public partnership with Mercy Hospital to handle through infectious diseases, Dr. Paul Murray and such to handle our TB issues, so
Can I phrase it this way, one way or another, these services are gonna be paid for. They're either paid for through this levy, or they're paid for through
The general fund.
Through the general fund. One way or another, the taxpayers are required by Ohio revised code to pay for these services. We, we struggled with the former TB board through the early two thousands, I believe Commissioner Kokoski warned them that, that the next time they came back for a levy, she wanted to see some structural changes in delivery of services. We did not see those structural changes when they came back, in fact, we, we saw more siloing of the services, and the board decided to maneuver a little bit different, and we did away with the tuberculosis board, the TB board contracted with a private entity that was in our community, the infectious disease department, lowered the cost, which included lowering the levy to pay for those costs. I will tell you, those costs are still significantly lower than what was being provided for eight, nine years ago, and we did, we can still operate under the similar monies for the next five years. Mercy's been a real good partner, they've done a really, really good job, it proved public-private partnerships can exist and can work, and, and I, I, I think that the taxpayers should just understand that these are not enhancement services in the community, these are mandated services
They're not arbitrary, they're mandatory services to be provided.
People don't recognize TB as, as a problem anymore. Unfortunately, there's resistance strains out there that if, if left unchecked, could really, you know, run rampant in a community and, and significantly drive up healthcare costs in a community. It's keeping it in check through requirements for quarantine and drugs, because when people can't pay for TB drugs, they can spread the TB, they don't take the drugs. Actually, we're required to pay for the drugs, we're required to pay for the treatment, so that we don't get into an epidemic sometime in the future.
We had significant costs a couple of years ago with that gentleman in the area.
He was, he was quite challenging, we had to quarantine him for several months, he had a resistance strain, he was living in a crawl space under a bar and visiting the bar, we had to track down all the patrons, we had to check everybody, and it only takes a couple of those in a community to really get an explosive epidemic going, but this is, this is a no-frills item, this must be paid for.
Commissioners, I just might say that, yeah, when you do these levies, you can word them in terms of cents or dollars, and Teresa and I discovered that commissioners in the county have traditionally done it in cents, whereas when I drafted up for the townships, I do it in dollars, so that's why, and it makes a difference in that number there.
Well, I kept taking it back and forth, going, this doesn't make sense, send this back, these numbers aren't proper, and I was
That's, that's basically what happened, she, she was always using cents and I was using dollars, so we were getting our numbers mixed.
Okay, thank you, yeah, 'cause there was confusion, 'cause every time I looked at it, back in Teresa's office, and actually, Commissioner Lundey, I said, this doesn't look right to me, we took it back, and trying to figure out that whole dollar zero point, where that zero goes at in that entire line item across for four or five spaces to make it fit, but thank you for
So, there will no longer be cents in the language.
Thank you, thank you.
Cents with a C, not a B.
Correct.
I know, it was like, ooh.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miskowski.
Aye.
Do we wanna finish these three and then go into the appointments?
Yes.
Under Job and Family Authorized Purchase Service Group and Children and Families Council for Title Twenty Social Service Black Grant-funded Services for fiscal year sixteen in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-two cents effective July first through September thirty, two thousand and sixteen.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miskowski. Aye.
Under Workforce Create Fund twenty-three oh one for workforce development for the Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program for the purpose of tracking TANF funding to deliver integrated comprehensive case management and employment services for low-income youth and young adults.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, let's go into this, Jim. This was a long time coming, we put it together where our workforce development is going to operate this.
Well, we're starting to, it's, it's, the transition is going to take a little bit of time. I'm, I'm comfortable that Mr. Longo has a firm handle on, on what we're doing. As you know, there was only two choices to be made by the Board of Commissioners, is whether to have these services within the Job and Family Services or within workforce development. I had extensive conversations with Mary Lugolsky, she felt that it was better placed with Job, with workforce development. Mr. Longo felt that he was up to the challenge and made that decision, but we're gonna have some transition issues on, on how to make that continuation of services with, with TANF and WEOLA monies and incorporate those things together, but I'm comfortable that, that we're heading in the right direction and going forward, and this'll, this'll also shore up our, our argument for staying in independent WEOLA area rather than being condensed down into one big workforce region within northeast Ohio.
I had a question, did they come up with the final rules yet, or are they still working on the final rules? 'Cause I hadn't seen an update on that.
There's, there's final rules out there.
They do have the final
I would, they're as final as when they change their mind.
Okay.
The, the, it, it, funny thing about, since we always been out there, there's always been a slight tweaking of everything we get. It, it doesn't change a lot, but it's enough to be annoying. So, we'll, we'll, we're gonna do our best with what our understanding is right now, but we do anticipate the state coming back sometime in the fall and re-looking at the workforce areas again.
That's what the discussion was in Columbus, that's why.
Right, and I don't know how that affects this decision. It was, as a legislative body, you, you were the one that made the decision of where the comprehensive case management went. If we got consolidated into a different region, I don't know how you would feel about that being in workforce development, you may want it back in a local Job Family Services. I did, I did, excuse me, I did ask and I was told, but I don't know if it'll stay accurate that we could move it back if we so desire to do so in the future, because we clearly, we don't believe that services delivered out of a hub out of Cuyahoga are in the best interest of Lorraine County right now. I certainly wouldn't like to see this as part of a workforce development initiative out of Cuyahoga being directed by them, when we, when we can maintain a certain local flavor on, on the directions and, and the issues that are very relevant to our community, which may be far different than the issues facing a, a different community.
Well, we're talking about the workforce development, really need to get employers to participate, please, on North Ridge Road, we've got a new program, where we're trying to put together employers with people with certain aptitudes that have been pre-tested, and it's been sort of a disconnect, as I've been working with employers, they don't quite understand what the program is, so I think we really need to push that out there.
Well, you know, Ted
We've done a couple of public programs, but I don't think quite enough
Well, he
For an outreach.
As a business
And that's not a criticism.
As, as a businessman yourself, I, I can understand some of your frustration, but, but I also have a frustration, the only time that people wanna understand our program is when they absolutely want, have a, a need.
No.
And they don't wanna see us, or speak to us, or come to information sessions because they're doing fine. But as soon as they're not doing fine, they wanna know every workforce development, every economic development, and they, and they act as if we haven't been knocking on their door. Quite frankly, we do business outreach, we do it from both economic development, workforce development, we're out there in the community, but trying to get past the sentinels to, to the, the decision-makers is always a big challenge, because they're busy doing business, and I respect that, but for them to say, well, gee, nobody ever tells us about, they really don't wanna know about it until they're in crisis.
Well, they're not necessarily engaged in it, they just, they aren't aware, as I talked about here, the issues with employment, as we've talked about transit, people getting places, they start asking about it because there's a significant need, and then you've gotta explain it to them.
And let, let me also
And I'd like to thank Mike Longo and the staff, they've done a great job with everybody I've sent over there, they've been pointing on
Sure, they, they do a good job, they, they, you don't have to thank, they're our department.
Right.
The, the, I, I, let me say this, the other thing that business has to struggle with is requirements, it's not just a matter of handing them dollars or handing them programming or, they have to actually participate, and there's engagement pieces that they, they find frustrating, they just really want something, and then they wanna move on and forget all about all the trailings and strings that go along with that, it's not that easy. There's a lot of regulations from the federal government, there's a lot of tracking that has to be done, but can we put together a, a process that really helps and aids them? Sure we can, but, but it's not, it's not that ea, it's that easy to convince them that they should be engaged. Most businesses don't wanna be engaged with government, I know, I understand that, but in order to receive our services, they have to work collaboratively with us. The other piece now is that we're the ACT-ready community, we've been working on that through the Workforce Investment Agency, which is, works parallel to the Workforce Development Agency, and they are doing the assessments now. Key is to get the businesses to want to let us analyze their jobs, do an ACT assessment of their jobs, so that we can rank potential candidates for those jobs that have a greater opportunity for success in those jobs than, than what they're screening right now. Most people looking at a resume and they're trying to go, eh, can they do this job, is, well, they did over here, but it's similar, we can actually do the aptitude testing and the experience testing, assign them a, a grade, and we know that people that are at, let's call it a, a level six, and this job is a level six, the opportunity for success is eighty percent. We're, and we rank all of that, so, the, the employer piece is going to be very significant, but they're reluctant to, to let us get in, look at their job descriptions, their job classifications, do a, do an analysis of all of that, do the ranking, and, and then send them people that are eligible for employment opportunities. I don't have to hire them, all we're saying is, here's a pool of prospective candidates, and also, the, the state is working towards the same thing we are, where there'll be an evaluation of these candidates in the Ohio Means Jobs, so if they're actually pulling from the Ohio Means Jobs, they, they can look at relevant test scoring and say, these people look like the best candidates for these jobs. Somebody may have a rather spotty work history for various problems, but they may have a seven on their ACT, and quite frankly, only looking at a spotty career history because maybe they had substance abuse problems or mental health problems, they may be, everything may be resolved in their life, and they may be functioning perfectly right now, looking for an opportunity. Usually, those people don't get evaluated on paper very well, but they may evaluate very well on their ability to do a job going forward. So, if you're looking for skill sets and you're looking for people that are gonna be successful in the job, it's not just what they've done in the past, it's it's not just what they've done in the past. Some of those ranking criteria have to be looked at. I don't want to belabor it. I know we got another appointment this morning, but...
Just wanted to bring it up while we were talking about the workforce developments, talk about our ACT program.
Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Mr. Kalah.
Hi.
Ms. Kowski.
Hi.
Under the engineer-approved interim agreement with Trans System to assist with development of plans and specifications for the Middle Ridge/West Ridge Road safety improvements in the amount of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars to pay from the engineer project account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Hi.
Mr. Kalah.
Hi.
Ms. Kowski.
Hi.
Now we'll move to appointments. We have our 9:45 Visit Lorraine County interim director here, Jennifer Kennedy. She's here with the board chair as well, too, Pat Metzger. Looking forward to this presentation.
So, I'm Pat Metzger, so as the chair for the Lorraine County Visitor Bureau Board. I can say we've been working very closely with Jennifer Kennedy and her expertise in creating some kind of new message in this interim time that we can project forward into the future and be very active about the kind of benefits Lorraine County has to offer. And she's got a presentation here that will lay that out and some of her work in the last several months. So we just have to get it on the computer screen.
Pat, before you turn that up, why don't you let Jen introduce herself and...
I'll be next.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Jennifer Kennedy.
They'll see you on the monitors once you're just speaking.
I don't stand still very well, you guys. Most of you know that about me. I'm always all over the place. Anyway, I took the helm here as interim director at Visit Lorraine County. I would say May 20th was the day and have been busy ever since. Prior to that, I actually worked at Mercy for, oh, I don't know, about nine years or so, and then have been working on my own as a consultant with many of my clients.
Hey, Jen, Jen, for television purposes, just look this way. The camera will pick it up.
I'm having a hard time with that.
Pat, hold your head. Hold your head, Pat.
I'll do my best. So I have been a consultant with most of my clients in Lorraine County for the last six years. I have been working with Pat and the board very closely to take on the Visit Lorraine Challenge and the challenge of Visit Lorraine County and take it to the next level. I'm going to go through step by step what we've been up to and what our strategy has been and some of the tactics that we've been able to execute right now.
Thank you.
What we wanted to do was we actually developed two strategies. A short-term strategy, looking at the summer, especially with the RNC coming, and then a long-term strategy. So what do we want to accomplish in the short term and the long term? In the short term, really what our goal is, is to build business, but not losing sight of that long-term goal, which is to build our brand and over time acquire a nice continuous business build of people visiting Lorraine County. I've been saying, "Stay, dine, play" here. Timing. Talk about jumping right in. Timing was so important this summer. Not only is the summer our peak travel time, but combining that with the RNC coming in July, we needed to get a move on and be very aggressive. So we've chunked it up, again, going back to the strategy of short term and long term. And our efforts will continue through the summer. Marketing channels. We looked at some different marketing channels. Again, we wanted to be really aggressive, knowing that what we had ahead of us. When you look at the channels, and I'm going to run through each of these individually, but just to give you an overview, when you start looking for things to do, places to go, places to stay, the first place people go to is online. So we needed to be there. We needed to be a step ahead of them. So we really took an aggressive online presence. To me, that was the single most important thing that we could do. Even taking it a step back and saying, "All the brochures that have been passively placed, all of the ads that have been placed, if you see something and it stores in your brain, the first place we've been, our society nowadays goes to look, is online." "Oh, I saw something about that. Let me look it up. Let me search it." So we really needed to have a strong eye-line presence. Again, knowing the way we operate, the next place people are looking for information is social media, mainly Facebook right now. Paid search. We needed to make sure that we were easy to find when people were looking for us. And then traditional marketing, and then brochure marketing, which has been in place. When we talk about online digital, again, we have to go back to our goals. So we did it two different ways. We looked at before, in the month of June and into early July, we actually opened up our online presence, our digital presence nationwide. We know that people from DC are coming and looking. "Hey, I'm going to Cleveland. I'm coming in a day early. What should I do?" So we actually targeted people in DC and all over the country to try to get them, capture them, before they came. And we really studied the business traveler and how the business traveler operates online. So here is just a brief example of what we're looking at. On the right-hand side, you'll see some of the banner ads. We looked at what our resources were here in Lorraine County, what our opportunities were. You could see playing, an opportunity to take advantage of the lakefront, people that may not have experience with Lake Erie. So we promoted playing and dining throughout this. On the left-hand side, Men's Health was a page that surfaced very well in terms of the demographics that we studied and the business traveler that may be coming. So you can see how that ad placed online. Additionally, what we did was a little bit of retargeting. So if they happened to come to our page and then navigated away, our ad resurfaced on the pages that they visited later. So you've probably seen that if you've been shopping online, put something in your cart and then went on, and all of a sudden Sears is saying, "Hey, you know, did you forget about this?" That's what we did. Here's the page in National Geographic. Again, this is online. And then going back to the long-term strategy, we know that eighty-five percent of the household decisions are made by the woman. So in terms of vacationing, planning where to stay, we actually looked at some sites and did some page sites that targeted the woman of the household that's planning the activities, planning the dining, planning the weekend getaway.
What percentage was that?
Eighty-five percent.
A hundred percent my household.
A hundred percent my household.
I would guess that, I would guess that it's higher now, but, yes, we all know how that operates. And actually, at the meeting we had earlier, someone said, "Well, what about the workplace, too?" But we also did paid search. So when you go to a search engine, and just for example, illustrated purposes, I'm going to use Google. When you go to Google and you type in "things to do in Lorraine County," a million things could come up. What we wanted to do is we wanted to be number one or number two. And to get to number one and number two, the guaranteed way to do that is to bid on phrases and pay for them. So we did that. And I'm not going to go through all of the keywords, but here are some categories that we bid on. Outdoor activities, lakefront, wineries, dining, family fun. And here's just an example, if you look, and I just, this is just a screenshot from my computer. You know, I think I typed in "things to do in Lorraine County," and our calendar of events surfaced. But again, to me, those were just some fundamental things, some building blocks that we needed to do to make all of our advertising and everything that we're doing effective. Here is just a snapshot of our social media page. This is actually from a phone because most people are accessing Facebook from their phone, especially the business travelers. Again, what we did, we did it in two segments. Prior to the RNC, we did nationwide, people that fit into the business traveler demographics. And we not only did News Feed ads that you see sponsored up in the corner, if you are familiar with Facebook, but we also did the sidebar ads as well. And as time goes on and the RNC passes, we're going to open that up. So it's people more regional, again, in the demographics that we decided on. And then we did some more traditional advertising, the print ad. This is an example, and I'm going to, thank you, it's underneath my binder there. We took out an ad in Cleveland Magazine, RNC Edition. Twenty-five thousand extra copies are going in all of the hotel rooms in Cleveland. And the thing that I'd like to point out about this ad that I pointed out a little bit earlier is, you can see, it's really a nice copy, is that we collaborated with The Chamber. And not only did that make our advertising a little bit more cost-effective, but it also, to me, sent really a nice symbolic message that we're working with like-mission organizations to accomplish similar goals and working together. I think that we made a bigger splash than we could each on our own. Here's an example of an ad that launched today. And this is really talking, this is really directed to people that may live on the western portion of the county, that won't want to go downtown Cleveland or to Cracker Park. It's going to be so crowded, trying to push them west to visit our fine dining establishments. And it really is point-blank. It comes out and says that. So it's running today in the Taste section of The Plain Dealer and next week in the Sun News in the western corridor of Cuyahoga County, Scene Magazine this week and next week, and going out in Scenes E-Blast.
Yeah, I think I mentioned to you before the meeting, I got a text message this morning from my father, who reads The Plain Dealer and in addition, The Chronicle. And he said that Lorraine County ad, Plain Dealer, Page C3, go west ad as well.
Good. Great. We worked with WKYC, which is Channel 3, and we placed local TV spots on the morning local news and evening news. So when you're tuning in at 6:00, 7:00 AM, you'll see our thirty-second spots as well as the eleven o'clock news. Additionally, we did a cable buy, recognizing that the business travelers were coming in. So we bought thirty-second spots on news channels like CNN, MSNBC, Downtown Proper. And then we also bought, when you're looking at the western and eastern region of Cuyahoga and Lorraine County. And I will play the spot for you here.
In Lorraine County, we invite you to do whatever floats your boat, or your paddleboard, or your mountain bike for that matter. Because here in Lorraine County, we have a world of things to do. And if dining is more your hobby, we have more than a few recommendations to float your way. Come discover all that Lorraine County has to offer. After a day or two here, we promise you'll be floating on air. For more information, go to visitlorrane county dot com.
Of course, those morning buys are more affordable probably than the late newscasts.
You know, we actually, I have to say, WKYC is a great partner. They really have done a nice job for us. So we've been working with them for our social media and this. And they've also given us a little PR. So we were able, I was on Live on Lakeside yesterday at no cost. So they really worked with us to make it an affordable, effective buy. Some of the other things that have been ongoing is that there's brochures everywhere, regional ad placements. Additionally, we are in Red Book, Women's Day, and good housekeeping in a regional perspective. From a public relations perspective, as I mentioned, we are on, we were on Live on Lakeside yesterday, and that's going to live at their, on their homepage. And we can also take that and put it on our social media and our website. Also, I did an interview with Destination Cleveland, talking about RNC initiatives so that all of the volunteers know what's going on in Lorraine County. Everyone that's involved with the RNC knows some things about Lorraine County. They feature a different county, and ours happened to be this week, which was great timing. I've been working to get kind of a fact, everything about Lorraine County in the hands of the people that run the social media for Destination Cleveland, which has started at hashtag #AskCLE. And the purpose of that is, someone wants to know what to do, they have information about us at the fingertips. So I've been trying to get the information, kind of some of the backbones, to complement all the aggressive marketing that we've done. So is there any questions?
Wonderful job. Wow.
Yeah, very good job.
Good.
I think what's interesting, it's something that we've discussed, is, you know, a lot of folks have said, "Well, how are you focusing on those attending the actual convention?" But at the same time, we felt that an area that was being overlooked was that a lot of people who might frequent downtown restaurants don't want anything to do with, you know, the crowds and the demonstrators and everything else that's going on. And that would give us an opportunity for them to experience our restaurants. You feel the same way about that, obviously.
Yes. What we do know is that the people that are here attending the RNC are scheduled, that they have transportation and they're scheduled. If they bring their family, of course, that's an opportunity for us. But the other thing that we do know is that Cracker Park Hotels, there's Cracker Park Hotels that are booked. So people that normally go to Cracker Park, you know, are just, it's five, ten minutes, you know, for them to come to our restaurant. So absolutely, that's the biggest opportunity for us during the RNC.
And I know there's something that really hasn't been done much in the past, promoting our restaurants. And I hope at some point, we can maybe bring the restaurants together and even have a Lorraine County Restaurant Association, whatever it may be, because we've got some great dining experiences here. I think the other thing that's important to talk about is that, you know, the RNC folks keep everything pretty close to the vest. They don't share much information. It's not like you can say, "Hey, can you give us an email list or a mailing list of the people who are coming so that we can reach out to them and let them know about the opportunities in Lorraine County?" I'm sure you ran into that challenge.
Yes, very much so. And as we've seen, there was a bid process that started over a year ago for some of the services as well. I think in the short time that I've made some relationships that have allowed me to gather some information and get some information. But it's been, you know, they keep everything pretty close to the vest.
And then I guess the other area, too, is that, you know, because I know that you came in to help us make this transition, but the original plan for the RNC was primarily just brochure drops at the hotels? Is that what the primary plan was at the time?
Well, my understanding of what has been completed before I came in was that we did place an ad, the Visitors Bureau placed an ad in the Destination Cleveland Magazine, which is going to be distributed in all of the hotel rooms as well. But unfortunately, I can't speak to anything other than that.
Yeah, so we greatly build upon that, obviously.
Yes.
Okay.
Love all the online, digital, and social media. That's where it's at nowadays.
Great.
Great job.
Thank you.
Really impressed.
Thank you.
Good leadership, Pat.
Yeah. 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 Job very well done. Very well done.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your trust.
Just for the record, if nobody noticed, we kind of unveiled our new logo there in the presentation. So it may have escaped some people out there, but we are shifting logos for the county, and it was in the new presentation.
No Bluebird. Goodbye, Bluebird.
No more Bluebird. We also have an appointment here with the Health District levy request. David, how are you this morning?
Good, you?
Good.
Good morning, commissioners, staff, guests. Well, it's been a pretty busy year for public health here so far.
Just a little busy.
Yeah, a little bit. So, as you know, we've had a lot of discussions about the merger of health departments. And it's been an ongoing discussion for thirty years here in the county. And so a couple of years back, there was some interest by the mayors of the communities in what would this really look like? And so a culmination of all that happened in the last six months. And we had some steps to get over, needless to say. And so I'm happy to report, though, that a signed contract has been executed and is on its way to Columbus for filing with the Ohio Department of Health. And we will be one big happy family on January of seventeen. So that's a good thing. Now, one of the questions that kept coming up is, "Why are we hurrying? Why are we doing this now when we really have all year to do it?" Well, there's really two main reasons. One was for personnel. If you're in one of those city health departments, you don't want to find out November 31st that, "Oh, by the way, we're closing in a month." So that was one piece. But the other piece was, we are on our levy cycle where we do renewals. And we were scheduled to come this fall for a renewal. And so when we first talked about this, we said, "Well, you know, if we double the size of our jurisdiction, we could have an opportunity to actually lower the levy from one mil to a half a mil." And right now, that's about a little over thirty dollars a year is one mil, and about a little over fifteen dollars a year is a half a mil. And so although it's not a huge amount of money for individual taxpayers, it's an opportunity to lower taxes. And, you know, hopefully Brad makes sure that gets in the paper. But, you know, that doesn't happen that often. And the reason we can do that is because we don't need three boards, three health commissioners, three directors of each of the divisions. The administrative costs are all savings. So that economies of scale really allows us to provide services without having to have all the overhead that is currently going on in the multiple health departments. So I'm happy to report that our board, one of the issues our board had was, we really needed a signed contract and we needed to have that in writing before the board was willing to say, "Okay, now when we approach the county commissioners, we'll ask to lower that levy from..." that levy from 1 to .5. And so now that we have that all in place, there is a resolution for our board that's going to be voted on, which I have every assumption that will pass to lower the levy from 1 mil to .5 mil. And you'll be receiving that here soon, and I would assume on your next agenda, you'll have an opportunity to consider that. So that's kind of where we are. I'd be happy to answer questions on what that means. I will want, I do want to emphasize something. Services will not change in terms of being lowered in any way. I've had public meetings where we've talked about this, and it's important to remember the savings all comes from the administrative piece. Most of the field work that we do, we have a variety of different sources. Not unlike where you diversify your investments, we diversify our budget. So we have grant dollars that come in, we have the money, the levy dollars that come in, but then we also have, you know, fees and, you know, other things that pay for it. So really, it's about a third of our budget is the actual levy. And so a lot of that savings will all come from the fact that we will not have that administrative cost any longer. So services are still going to be moving along. Really, the only cuts are to the administrative piece, so.
Wonderful. Health department does a great job.
Congratulations on your leadership, by the way. They've talked about it for 30 years, and many have tried, few have gotten there. I really like working with you, Dave. We've had opportunity to work together. It needs to be said, this is a tremendous accomplishment in pulling these together. I know you've got a little dissension in the ranks right now that you're handling with board membership, but it looks like it's going to go away.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to commend you as well, too. I'm sure there are a lot of people who were betting against you, being able to pull it off, but you did a great job. I know you went to a lot of council meetings, faced a lot of tough questions from council members, community members, so on and so forth. But I always thought you, you know, presented yourself in a very professional and diplomatic way, and, you know, you bring a lot of credibility to the issue and just really strong leadership. And I think, you know, you played a key role in getting it done, and just really appreciate it. This is, you know, this, the environment we're in nowadays, we need collaboration, we need the cooperation, and, but making this kind of marriage possible wasn't a shotgun wedding either. I mean, you actually worked it through very well.
Well, thank you. I will say, you know, timing is everything to some degree. You know, a lot of the pieces that you've been talking about today, you know, on pressures from the state and other reasons, really made it the prime opportunity. And although I may have been the spokesperson for it, there's a team of people from the existing health departments and from my own health department that really came together to kind of make this happen. And we are in the middle of a nice transition team right now, where we're really working together to kind of make it all go as smoothly as possible, and we'll be ready to go come January 1.
The only thing that's been brought to me, a couple of council people are still wondering how the whole voting process is going to work.
That was the dissension I was talking.
Right, exactly. What type of thoughts will the board have on that?
Sure. Well, so there's two pieces. It's important to remember that the district advisory council is the one who acts, it's the second part of the vote. In other words, the city council votes, and then the district advisory council, which is all the rest of the communities that are in the district, vote. And so the agreement that was voted on was one member from each of the two communities, from Elyria and from Lorraine. And that's the one that we currently are signed and sealed and delivered. However, at the DAC meeting, the district advisory council meeting that'll occur in March, there will be, I would assume, there'll be a proposal from the two cities to increase their number of members on the board. And at that time, that'll be considered, that'll be voted on, and that'll kind of decide that. At any time, really, communities can talk a little bit about how they would like more board membership, or they don't, they're not as concerned. I will say this, you know, board membership, it's important to have at least a person representing your communities, but many of our communities split board members. So an example would be Avon and Sheffield Lake have split a member for quite a while, and now they'll split it with Avon Lake. And Amherst and Oberlin split a member. And so, you know, it's not an exact science in terms of purely based on property value or purely based on population, but as long, but at this point, there's been pretty good representation on the board, and we'll grow from eight to 10. And we'll try to look at existing board members on the other two boards of health so that they can bring in what they've been doing over the years, and so there'll be some good representation and good discussion. My board's not very contentious, you know, when it comes to that. They really want to do what's right for public health. And so I would suggest that even with just that one extra board member from each community, there'll be quite a bit of input that comes from those communities. So I'm hoping that that will be good enough. If it turns out that they want to add more, and the district advisory council says yes, we'll add an extra person from Elyria, an extra person from Lorraine, then so be it. You know, I think most of the mayors from the communities and the township trustees, they have made it very clear that their main way to make sure that public health services get done is talking to the representative from our department or me personally to say, hey, I've got a problem in my community, and I need something specific to be done. And that's really where the rubber hits the road to some degree. And I think that's the same with commissioners and everyone. You know that I'm available and my staff is available, so if there's an issue, we're going to handle it. And it's not necessarily always run through, you know, your particular board member, so.
And I know there's, you know, we're always trying to educate the public about how things work in the county. I know there's the perception that you actually work for us. You want to clear that up?
Right. So I've tried to talk about this without, you know, without, you know, being too direct about it, but yes, I, we are an independent board, and your relationship and our relationship is, of course, cordial and very cooperative, but really, that independent board of private citizens that are usually doctors and veterinarians and nurses and other business owners on our board actually appoint the health commissioner, and then the health commissioner administers the department. And so that's an important thing to remember, because in 1919, way back when, when we were created, it was really, the idea was to have some political isolation so that there could be some pure public health decisions made, and not, and try to have at least amount of politics involved. And I talked about this with the councils a little bit, that, you know, that's a really good system to have, because, I mean, at the end of the day, public health has to be protected. And if you're waiting for, you know, some kind of political issue, you know, it can be too late. So there's a, that political isolation's a good thing. It allows us to have a really good relationship, but it also allows us to be a little independent as a board of health.
And the balance comes into the relationship with you as the county supreme budgetary authority, where they have to come talk about the levies and what they want to do. So that gives you a voice in the matter. In addition, since we're clarifying already, the board of county commissioners has a seat on the advisory board that meets annually to undertake issues, just as you said, membership on the board and expansion, and usually the president of the board of commissioners.
I was there voting for the merger.
There you go.
It was a swing vote. I was a swing vote, I don't think so.
14-13, wasn't it?
It was 14 to 3, actually.
Oh, 3, okay. I think 14, it's on the 13th paper. Might have been a misprint. I wasn't at the meeting.
So I mean, you know, there's really good, there's really good balance in the relationship and how it works, especially as a political subdivision of the state of Ohio. And I really enjoy working with you since the last couple of years.
And then when I was contacted by your consultant, who was doing some research, looking at perceptions of the health district, and I said, I think the greatest strength of the health district is that it's not seen as being political, it's truly seen as focusing on community health.
Yes, and we had some results from those surveys, and at the moment, you know, I, this shouldn't surprise anyone, if the residents were given the opportunity to lower their taxes, 73% have said yes. I would like that to be 100%, but I know how that can be, so.
That's quite recorded, actually.
Yeah, so.
The other ones didn't understand the question.
Right, yeah, they may not have understood the question. I think some may have said undecided still, so. So hopefully, that will be the case. And it doesn't look like we'll run a full-fledged campaign, although we will probably do some letters to the editor and some other things like that, you know, talking about the issue. So, because I think clarifying that why the taxes are being lowered are important, is important. And so, and the concerns about services are important. So we'll continue, you'll continue to see messages from our department about the services that we do every day.
Great, okay. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Mr. Cortez.
I think we had a lot this morning. I yield.
Mr. Ennis.
I have to discuss a purchase of, interest in real, or sale of interest in real estate.
Last Wednesday, I had our final meeting with a small group of people that have been planning on a big event, and I don't think it could have come at a better time with what happened in Dallas. It's going to be the evening of Saturday, July 23rd, at the Lorraine County Speedway on Route 58, and the gates open at 4:00, and racing starts at 7:00. And it's to honor our first responders in Lorraine County, the police, dispatchers, corrections, fire, EMS, tow truck operators, and their spouses will all get in free with the tragic event that happened in Dallas, where five police officers were killed this past week in the line of duty. I think this is a great opportunity for us to come out and support those people that are there for us when we need them. If you come in, it's $12 a ticket if you're not a first responder or a family, and you will get $2 off your ticket if you bring in a donated food item for pets, pet food, and all that pet food is going to be donated to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and split with the food pantry of Lorraine County. So hopefully, you can all make it to that event. Did you have something? I thought you were going to say something. Thursday, I had the opportunity to take a tour of Horizon Education Center in Elyria. They have many facilities throughout Lorraine County and have been a great childcare provider for many years. I want to thank Dave Smith, who is the director, and also Louise Router, who is the director of the Dewhorse location, for showing me around, and it was really nice. The kids were great, a lot of cute, cute kids. Thursday, that same evening, at the Charleston Coffee House, the Sugar Savvy Solutions Sisterhood had their opening, and they had, we had like 50 to 60 ladies there, and almost all of them took the pledge to reduce their sugar intake from, to 24 grams of sugar in 24 hours. And Monday evening, I attended the Lorraine County Community College, where they had the grand revealing of the Reeser family. Dan Reeser and Myla and their two children had a substantial donation to Lorraine County Community College, and they have now the Reeser Grand Ballroom, no, not Grand Ballroom, just the Grand Room, not Ballroom. So thank you to that wonderful family, and they did a great job of presenting what they have done in Lorraine County, especially in Elyria. So thank you to them. And then yesterday, we had our ditch hearing and sales tax hearing last evening, so it's been a busy week, and that's the end of my report.
Very busy. On Friday, Nowaka had their quarterly policy meeting, just moving agenda items forward in regards to our board meeting in September. Congratulations Sacred Heart, they had a wonderful festival once again. They do a really great job over there, just all the volunteers that helped put that together. It's been going on for years. Again, the ditch hearing, had the opportunity yesterday to attend. Attorney General DeWine and Dick Desic were at the Boys and Girls Club. Attorney General DeWine has done a lot to enhance Boys and Girls Clubs across the state of Ohio, and the Desic family is always large supporters of Boys and Girls Club. They actually renamed the entire campus area in Lorraine, the Desic Family Campus. Mike Conabear, Sandy Dome, and the entire staff, just wonderful organization. They're great partners with us, they do a lot with our youth.
Mike does a great job over there.
Yes, he does.
He has, it's a pretty big operation. Most people don't realize it, because I only see one little piece, but they're quite sizable.
Extremely large, yes. And they've just, the facility's been rehabbed, so they're doing a great job feeding kids. Actually, a young lady from the Elyria Boys and Girls Club was Youth of the Year for the state of Ohio. So she'll be going off to Washington, D.C. to compete for the youth of the country with Boys and Girls Club. But, yeah, again, sales tax, probably need a little bit of discussion what we're going to do with the sales tax going forward, because we probably have to do something next week. We presented a lot of issues, like Pam's not here, like taking Steph in a wacken and sending us her Excel spreadsheets and us figuring out what our costs were and what we could do. I think we came up with the 50% split on the quarter percent as a pretty good compromise. MOVE doesn't wish to support that, that's up to them as an organization, but comments from people who were here after it ended seemed more than happy with that compromise. So I would not be averse to.
You gave them actually a plan, they asked for a plan, you presented a plan, with actual cost data. The, and hopefully, they'll look at that, because what they presented us to didn't have actual cost data.
Didn't have any scenario, no modeling or anything else.
It basically said 30-minute commute times, and it didn't have cost data breakdown, and yours was a little bit more comprehensive, and it demonstrated the service that can be delivered under X dollars.
And I think it's a more reasonable amount to go to the taxpayers with, and also in regards to government operations. I think the public knows that we've been struggling for years in trying to hold things together, that it would not be a plan that would not get support. But, again, next week, we really need to decide what we're going to do. I would support the 50% split currently in regards, and work off of that and see what support can be garnered community-wide. If not necessarily MOVE as an organization, probably members of MOVE would support and the business community, so. Yeah, very busy week, end of my report.
I didn't have the, I did not have the opportunity to attend the Sacred Heart Festival. I have in the past, it's always just a great festival, and understand it was very successful. Also, congratulations to the Lorraine County Historical Society and Bill Burden, his whole group. They had their ice cream social there at the Hickory's on Sunday. I think that's the first time in a long time where it hasn't been very hot and uncomfortable. It was just so pleasant and just a great event there on the lawn of the Hickory's. They bring out the old cars, too, and just a great afternoon for the whole family. Also, was in attendance for the Reeser Grand Room dedication at Lorraine County Community College. Known the Reeser family for quite some time, Dan and Myla, and for a long time, they've done a lot of things behind the scenes. You could tell that even when they had to step to the podium there and talk about their commitment to the, to the community college and their large contribution to the college, that they felt quite uncomfortable having to do that. But, so they work quietly behind the scenes, but they've always been very supportive of the community and helped out a lot of families over the years. And also, two first-class children in Danny and Shannon, just two very bright young individuals who are going to be strong future leaders as well. Was not able to attend the Farm Bureau Pork Chop Dinner, which pork chops are always amazing, so I missed out on that. But the Farm Bureau does a lot of good work for our communities and throughout the county. Of course, we had the Guthrie Ditch Hearing, and once again, just want to commend our county administrator and Don Romanek, everybody involved with, you know, the SWAC, and just everything's working so well, working in partnership with our township trustees as we work on these projects. I thought a very productive sales tax public hearing yesterday. I want to thank my colleague Ted Kalo for working closely with Nowaka and for Nowaka coming back with some really good, strong transit data that was very much needed to put the whole conversation in context. And I, too, you know, I want to thank you for suggesting that we split that sales tax 50-50 for the transit initiative. I think that's something that is very important for us to do. We need to keep transit moving forward. I think we can put together a very strong plan, a very strong strategy, that will be supported by the business community, and I look forward to members of MOVE joining with us and working in partnership with them. And this evening, looking forward to the best of Lorraine County. How can you not look forward to that? It's always a great, great evening and a great event. That completes my report.
Board correspondents.
I move that we approve the board correspondents and waive the reading.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to participate in public comment this morning? Yes.
You've been a patient man.
Yeah, very patient.
Well, I've been patient following your vote this morning on our levy. My name's Curtis Tugle, I'm the president of the Addus Board, and I just want to thank you very much for allowing the citizens of Lorraine County to have the opportunity to invest in treatment and prevention resources in the county. I think it's extremely visionary. It's important for the economic prosperity of the county and our communities and the future of our, of our children, and we look forward to explaining the rationale for this investment and why it makes sense, and we couldn't have done that without, you know, your support and your approval. And on behalf of the board, I just want to thank you for that and appreciate that.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Others wishing to participate in public comment? Okay, seeing no one else, I would move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel issues outlined by the county administrator and legal issues that were outlined by the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' general meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
I wish I was in school.
If only I had a math test today.
Or a book report to give.
I wish I was in school.
I'll stay after class. I'll clean the chalkboard. I'll do extra homework. I'll skip recess.
I wish I was in school.
I wish I was in school.
I really wish I was in school.
School ends, but free lunches for your kids don't have to. Find your local food bank at feedingamerica.org/summermeals for help. Together, we're feeding America.